Biafra, freedom, freedom. Please, our director will be in here any minute from now. So decorum is very, very important, we observe and keep calm. Okay, like I said, please, we are Biafrans, the director is part of us, he's the head of this movement, down to earth, human being which all of us knew or know. So all I'm saying is that if he is coming in, please, yes, no rushing toward him. Very, very important, we observe that, okay? So any moment from now, he will be in. So Chi Chi, hello Chi Chi, are you guys through? Because we need to make sure noise from that flank is properly reduced, please. Any noise from that flank, we have to reduce it, you know, we have to reduce it, alright? So on behalf of our, we stand, make no mistake, we are not going back. We are relentless and resolute about restoring our nation, Biafra. We thank Chukwukikwa Biyama for his infinite mercy by keeping us alive till today. And we are alive today in the land of the living is not because we are the most righteous, but by his special grace that we are still alive here today. So we continue with this struggle and make sure that we restore it to its logical conclusion. I thank you all, and for all people who come from far and wide. I can't thank you guys enough, it's not easy, but this thing we are doing is very, very sacrosanct and is very important for us for having a good life in future. Any luck? Not yet. I just wanna make sure. Okay, so let's everyone have their national, our national anthem, just in case if we can't recite it. Yeah, but we just shared now. Let me source. Hello Biafrans, like who said earlier on, our leader will be here any moment from now. There's tiny bit hiccup, which we know that is not a problem. So he will be here any moment from now, based on information we received. So remain calm and lower your voice, please, so that the noise is not too much. Thank you all for coming. It's not easy to leave whatever we are doing here today, but then what we are fighting for is more, more important than our work, because it's between life and death. So we must make sure we restore our nation in order to live it. So, yes, and again, people who come from far away, who happened or who might not go back to their place, let me know, I believe you must have already made arrangements, but because of time, we are starting. If you run late or if you hope that you cannot go back to the place, kindly let us know. We'll make sure you are fine, we are Biafrans, alright? Thank you very much. Beka onusi. We have eaten and then we have to raise our voice. You know that after food, there is adrenaline. Alright, there's few things I forgot to chip in, which obviously I don't know, because time, we're gonna start this program, we decide. We actually have quite a lot to talk about today, but it depends on which direction we are going when the program starts. So Biafran, you'll be surprised that we are having a Biafran football team and this World Cup coming, what are we gonna do, are we gonna win it? Who believe that Biafra are gonna win World Cup? Say hello! Biafrans are fantastic, all we are asking for is give us a platform to compete, that's all. That's all, you understand, give us a platform to compete and then we showcase our ingenuity. It's arrogant, you know, so football team, I think there's another thing that will be very, very important. Probably, I don't know, sometime in summer, there might be get together again in summer, whereby there will be different activities involving other nations to compete. Another thing I'm suggesting, this is just an idea that come in my mind, listen. Any marathon coming up in London, yeah? Please go and make sure you find out when there will be any marathon. Yeah, marathon, I think, yeah, I think around May, Biafra will run marathon. We are not relenting, we will run marathon with our flag, with everything. And I tell you something, if they don't wanna talk about us, we make sure that people hear our voice. So all hell, all hell, so are you in support of this? Okay, please, our director is here. Now, like I said, we are Biafrans, can we be calm? Please calm and listen. And it will be ideal if when he's coming in, probably we might stand up, but then it might block people's view, so probably hence is here, we can now probably stand up, not probably, let us stand up and then accord him that respect. But we'll tell you when to do that, once he's in this section, we can all stand up, because if everyone stand up there, the little kids and most of people who are not, who are short like me might not see him. So let us do it that way, okay? There's something I want us to know, he's here now, so everyone calm down. Yes, our director is coming in, hands of our floods, every director is coming in. Yeah, can we stand up, can we stand up? Can we stand up for our director? Thank you very much. We thank Chukwukikwa Biyama for bringing our leader here in our midst. It is not easy for him to be here because of running up and down, he's chaotic, a very stiff man, but we can't thank Biyama enough for giving us someone like him. We are indeed blessed to have him. Biafra, freedom! You are highly welcome in the midst of your people, people who followed you, people who believe in you. We thank you so much for coming and this is UK IPOB members gathered here from far and wide. Obviously, you know that is all of half of us is not here, but they make their efforts. So we thank you for coming in our midst. We didn't expect, but hence you are here, we are blessed to have you. Biafra, freedom! Alright, our director said you guys should remain sit, sit down, please, very much. Okay. Okay, everyone should get ready, because once our director settled now, we kick off with our national anthem and then we take it there. Okay, hand over to the national. Biafra, freedom! I'm almost hearing you, are excited? I didn't hear you. Are you not excited? Biafra, freedom! Oh, you see, it's a great pleasure, you here sir. Your people have gathered, you motivated us, say that courage is contagious and we're all here because of you. People are come from far and wide and it's a great pleasure for you to be here, sir. We're going to sing the national anthem, because we are here to restore Biafra. So I hope you're all ready. I didn't hear that, I hope you're all ready! Okay, well, let's stand and sing a national anthem, please. We will sing just the anthem and then we continue, okay? So, please take your caps off and mark a respect. After two, one, two. Land of the right, since some we love and cherish. Beloved homeland of our brave heroes. We must defend our lives or we shall perish. With love protect our hearts from all our foes. But if the price is death for all we hold dear, then let us die without a shred of fear. All hail Biafra! All hail Biafra! 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 It is customary that we pay a minute silence to all those who have been murdered by Nigeria and those who have been after us. We have to continue to honor them, because they deserve to be honored. We're going to observe a minute silence. Souls of our departed and beloved Biafrans rest in perfect peace. You may be seated. We will continue with our program. I would like to introduce Lawlaw Carol to come and share with us about where we've been, where we at now and where we're heading. Please, Lawlaw Carol. You may have to dim the lights, dim the lights.
Good evening, Biafrans, all hail Biafra. Can you hear me very well? Can you see the screen? Okay, good. Welcome Director, welcome Uchimafu and everybody here today. To introduce myself, for those that you don't know, I'm Carol Monday. I'm affectionately known as Lawlaw Carol Chidima Monday. I'm the special representative of the indigenous people of Biafra worldwide. I want to discuss with you today, embracing change as Biafra evolves. I'm going to talk a little bit today about IPOB and how we are evolving, especially in regard to media, because they are at the forefront of our struggle today. I've been with IPOB now, apparently I was told recently, I've been with IPOB seven years, so that's how long I've been in the struggle. IPOB media started to expand shortly after the Jonathan elections, 2014, 2015, to counter the Eurobar media, the fake news, etc. Okay, so the Nigerian media houses are unfortunately, not only do they carry nepotism and sentimentalityism, if you have a couple hundred pounds, you can pay a Nigerian media house to print whatever you want them to print, because they have no loyalty to the freedom of press. Okay, so to counter the Eurobar media, we set up national media. And these are the national media families, Biafa writers, family writers, Umuchuku writers, Biafa reporters, IPOB writers, which at the moment is currently looking for a new editor, I'll come back to that in a minute. And most recently, the recent addition is TBRV for Restoration Voice. If you go to the next one. The key for us is freedom of press. All of the families that I've just mentioned all run independently. They all are autonomous in the Biafran way. We're trying to rid ourselves of the Nigeria stigma. None of the people that work in the IPOB media in any branch is paid, they are all volunteers. When we started the national media, it's to the Biafrans worldwide for that. When we started the IPOB media, it was on a skeleton fund. And as you know, media is the last to be funded in this struggle, because there are a lot greater priorities. Sorry, I don't have my reading glasses today. No IPOB family member, this shouldn't be live, by the way. No IPOB family member is allowed to set up a website or use the IPOB name or the Radio Biafra London name. Obviously, this is for security reasons. If you were to go and start up a training company, you wouldn't like, would you? So the same way, you know, we maintain that you shouldn't set up another website with that, without permission from the leadership, that is. All of the national media, if we go back one again, all the national media have different websites. There are websites set up by IPOB and we have affiliated websites. They're all checked by some leadership to make sure that they secure, so that we have no sabotage or leaks from those websites. Other than that, they have freedom of press. The next one, please, sorry. And of course, we have going on from national media, we have BTV. If it goes the next one. And obviously, everybody knows Facebook. We have admins that work the Facebook groups, Radio Biafra London and Radio Biafra London 2. If you're on the wrong group, make sure you're on the group with 1.7 million people. The Facebook group has admins that run 24 hours a day now. They clear between 4,000 to 5,000 posts a day in the group. So if yours is hanging a bit, know that the volunteers are highly stressed. They do have regular day jobs, some of them, those that are able to work within the media. Like I said, all volunteers, the only thing that they run on is Biafra spirit, which they have in abundance. Radio Biafra, this is the one we all know and love. We started in London, Stevie Director and Uchimafu. We are now currently airing South Africa, Middle East, USA 1, USA 2 and Bland, so that we can expand the broadcast to run 24 hours a day. We also started Hauser Service in the North, Nigeria Hauser Service, to combat the fact that they tried to make a Nigeria Radio Biafra, so we started the Hauser Service. Unfortunately, the Hauser Service is currently suspended at the moment for lack of funding. It's been down one to one to just over a month, I think, now. It costs a lot of money to run that service daily with the AM charges. And at the moment, our priority is to the Biafra land transmitters. So obviously, we have a lack of funding in the struggle with election times. Sorry, I have trouble with my breathing. Obviously, with election times, this is crucial for us at the moment, but you know, hopefully, this will be back up in the next few months. Although they are looking for alternatives, ways to air the Nigeria IPOB families worldwide. A lot of people contributed to it and it was to raise money for media on the ground. Okay, so we've had a massive wide gap in media and we still have a massive wide gap. We're struggling to work with coordinators. From the ground, we felt that we had a massive ground gap as well, because the national media, some of them are from diaspora and so we were missing a lot of the ground information. With welfare working with a lot of the media teams on the ground, also there's a shortage of information coming from what's happening on the ground to up onto the mainstream to media and also to go to intel. So we set up state media and these are the state media houses, if I can remember them off the top of my head. The northern state medias is for Nigeria, so we get feedback from Kano and all the places in the north. You'll see all your states there, Enugu, Imo, Abia, Bayelsa, Delta. Also, we cover, sorry, also we cover Abuja, Lagos, I think Rivers as well, I missed there. So we're covering all the state medias. However, the state media is very struggling right now. They are attacked daily, as you must have seen on the Facebook recently. You cannot imagine what the state media goes through on a daily basis. And they survive on handouts throughout IPOB. There is very little funding for media, because they're at the bottom of the barrel, so to speak. Obviously, legal, current affairs for politics, etc. There's a lot more funding has to go out before they get to media. The state media teams are, like I said, struggling to deal with welfare. Their businesses are attacked, shops are burnt down. They come to their houses, they arrest them. If they're students, indeed students from universities, they go to the university and they go to the head desk level and they say, oh yes, call this student and then they arrest that student at university. They go to people's jobs and wait for them. So currently, our state media is having major problems on the ground with arrests. Quite often, their video equipment is taken, their phones are smashed, police harass them. They are your front line and they are suffering. Today, I read a report from a South African journalist who was picked up and he was, they thought he was an IPOB media journalist. He was held in the back of a van for two hours before they realized he had a African accent. So that, and then they released him. So that goes to show you what they do to Biafrans. Next one, oh, no, this one. This is the Biafra state newspaper. To not rely on handouts to make money, they now have a Biafra land newspaper. This is only the second edition now. They are having problems again with security. It's dangerous to print this, but they're still doing it and still trying to raise money rather than ask for handouts. They want to try and do it on their own and it's something we're invested to try and help them, to support them to get going. Because once that goes out into every coordinated family, it will raise money for media. Quick timeline, New Media, this is actually Director's baby and Deputy Director's baby, because they like tweet, Twitter, Twitter, Twitter. This section is the New Media now, like I said, it's Director's baby to help bring Twitter and the new formats of social media forward in the struggle, because there's a lot more coming on Vivo, Snapchat, Instagram, there's quite a few coming now. Sorry, I've only got 30 seconds left. We rely on handouts for data and equipment. Expansion now, we want to expand the music department, because like we know, every Biafran loves music. We have quite a few celebrities in Europe that work with us now and we want to expand on that. We have existing studios for music, we have one in Biafra land and one in New York with an O B. We want to expand on that. BTV development is now going to work more with the film industry, so Biafra has their own industry rather than relying on Nollywood. So Biafra has their own industry rather than relying on Nollywood. Education, obviously, is the primary one. And obviously, we want to encourage European nations especially for education funding, so we get to more events, the World Genocide Events. BEAD, which is advertised here today, is the UK one. And we're looking for a more permanent setting for a world genocide event, so we can get the information of what is happening to Biafrans. Biafra Goods is another one, Made in Biafra. Charity begins at home, so they say. So we are trying to encourage more Made in Biafra. The final plea I'm going to give before I run. Cooperation between the IPOB. We are family. Thank you. Assistance in media. If you can volunteer any of your time. We do want very good writers. If you have any experience with computers, if you are good at editing, or if you just are very good at doing political speeches, please contact me. Also, it's a sense of duty. We have a sense of duty to Biafra. Like I said, we're volunteers. If you volunteer, your time will be great. Although I know most of you are volunteers and coordinators here. Like I said, it's to bridge the gap between the coordinators and the media. Those of you who are coordinators here have media personnel in your team, I think. These, we've got BTV here. London has quite a few media teams. It does bridge the gap for the coordinators if they're linked with media, because then they get to know what's happening. When you come into the media teams, we don't just bring you in and you work, because we're structured to be autonomous. It's how you work. If you do well, you shift up quickly. It's the amount of work that you can add into it. We can't hold dead weight, which unfortunately, as people move, location, personal things happen to them. Obviously, we have to keep regenerating the media stuff. That's all for me. Thank you, everybody, or help Biafra.
Lala Tidimba, thank you for that. The next able leader, superior leader. I'd like to present someone very special. She's also called Tidimba, but she's been campaigning for Biafra since the 60s. In fact, over here is a picture. Yep, we went to Hull, and another lady, a white lady, said, "I remember Biafra when I was at university, 50 years ago." We have our own Lala Tidimba Veronica. And in my hand is money they were paying in the 60s for Defence Fund. This is 28th of April, 1968, Defence Fund. Now, they were students in those days, and they came to study, but the war broke out. But she not only go on the campaign marches, she also paid Defence Fund. So no excuses, guys. So please, Lala, come and talk to us.
Good evening, our Supreme Leader, Mazima For, Directors, and our Coordinators. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming tonight, well, today, for this wonderful meeting. My main purpose for standing here is we've been campaigning regarding setting up women forum, women organization. Because where there is any organization without strong backing of women, that organization doesn't really move forward. Because there is no man. Thank you. Everybody is born of a woman, and therefore, women can do a lot. I came here in the 60s as a student. And 2010, I decided to take an early retirement and go home, because there is no place like home. I went home, sold all my properties here, sold everything, sold my car, because I was a lecturer, so I was able to drive all over the place. And went home, spent three years there. It was, I had to come back, because the place was not good, really not good. So when I came back, I started from scratch. It's against my wish to be here. I've been in the forefront of really campaigning for us to get Biafra. I have children, I have grandchildren. And it would be my greatest wish to see that Biafra exists. Someone wrote in their platform, Facebook, and said, "Why do we talk about Biafra? Why do we talk about Biafra?" After all, when Biafra comes, it's the same people that makes up Nigeria that will stay in Biafra that we need to really think about. I said to them, "Even if I have to sell my property and make sure that Biafra exists, I will do so." I love Biafra so much. I went home, I could have gone to Nigeria, spent three years. I could have gone to Abuja, I could have gone to Lagos, I could have... But I stayed in Owari. I am from Owari, and I stayed there. So my main purpose today is not to do anything, but to say that we need to set up a women's organization. And we are privileged to have been given the permission to set up women organizations. And this is the symbol. It's called Association of Biafran Women... No, Association of Biafran Action Women. It's abbreviated as ABBA Women. When you look at it at the top, A, B, small a, and W, it sounds ABBA Women. And ABBA Women is this year, ABBA Women, on the 18th of November. My birthday is 17, so I remember this distinctively. On the 18th of November, this year will be 90 years. Women stood their ground in ABBA and said, "We are not paying tax." Yes? So our women have been really, really very active. Even when I went home, women were buying lands, building properties, letting it out. We, women in England, we need to really get up and do something. So, and this is... This is the shirt we have designed. We are still preparing things. This is the t-shirt. So we are hoping that... I've taken some names today. So we are hoping to set up women organization that would not only cater for the new generation, but also cater for women that are back home struggling. Because women there, they will do anything, they will go to different places. When we ask women to contribute or do something here, we are always penny pinching. We cannot get Biafra by penny pinching. We have to put our hand in our pocket and make sure that that Biafra comes in. Because nobody, nobody in this world that is a slave, because they treat us like slaves in there. Biafran women have always been anywhere... I was researching to see if the same taxation they impose on Biafran women in 1929, was it the same in the north? No. Was it the same in the south, in the western region? No. It's only in Biafra land that was done. So, can we really? Because once we are emancipated, we will not be getting any more bad treatment. We need to stand up and be counted. And it is time we say that, yes, we need to stand. And we need to start preparing. We need to start preparing for 18th of November 2019, for the 90th anniversary of ABBA Women. I salute you all, and thank you all. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, the great people of Biafra. Wherever you are, I welcome you. You welcomed me earlier. I am now welcoming you to this very live presentation, because the whole world is listening to us. We are live and we are direct from this very location here in London on this very sad day. It is a very sad day, because a lot of people have been killed back home. It is a very sad day, because nothing works in the Zoological Republic. It's a very sad day, because the whole essence and tenet of democracy has been turned on its head. And I'm sure that civilized nations watching what is happening in the zoo cannot believe it. The only bright side to my experience today is that I came here, gathered here. It is a spot of good news for me on this very sad day. But I'm here to address all of you, to look at the issues that have been bothering this very great family in the UK, because UK is arguably the strongest IPOB family in the whole world. I need you to understand that. Now. I want to stand when I'm addressing the microphone. This very IPOB family in the UK is very unique. When we started, it wasn't this way. But when I was incarcerated, when I was imprisoned by the now late dead decaying Bukhari somewhere in Saudi Arabia, this great family came to life. And you have my respect, you have my regard. And because of the work you're doing, Biafra is going to come. Our mother and our sister spoke about ABBA Women. Our mother and our sister spoke about ABBA Women. That we are the first to rise against colonialism in the whole of Africa. Because flowing through our veins is freedom. We are born as free people, and we are going to die like free people. These journeys sometimes appear so difficult that some of us begin to think about the impossibility. But nothing is impossible before Chukwueka Biamada asks us to come. Apart from the Jews in Israel, of which, of course, we are related to, and I can prove it to you if you want me to, tonight. We worship Elohim by the name we gift our children. That is what drives me, that is what propels me. Anagame Fairosi, I don't worship idol. I worship the same chenaken that our ancestors worshipped. The nonsense happening today in the zoo was tried 300 years ago. After the Fulani succeeded in conquering the entire Hauser race and subjugated them, turned them from the hard-bra monarchies into the Emirates we have today. Hauser helped them to decimate the Middle Belt. They helped them to counter parts of the Obaland. Fulani never succeeded before, and not in this time, they can never succeed. They came to fight corruption before. 300 years ago, they came to Hauserland and told them, "We have come to fight corruption." Today, in the 21st century, luckily, he's now dead. They are still fighting. The same people that claim they are fighting corruption are the same people today snatching ballot boxes. They are the ones emptying the treasury, driving the money to Tidibis House in Lagos to be shared amongst voters. They are the same people this very day giving money to people to vote for them. That they have come to fight. We keep selling ourselves short all the time. When I say it, there was a German reporter that came to my house in 2017, when I was released from prison. After interviewing me, he wrote a report for Deutsche Welle in Germany and said to them that I'm a racist. And I said to them, "If defending my people is racism, then I will gladly answer to the name 'a racist', and I will tell you why." What do you think the cabal is doing in the zoo? Do you think they love you? We called for election boycotts to achieve something. To show them how powerful we are, to show them how powerful you are, to prove to the zoo that IPOB is the greatest, most formidable freedom-fighting outfit in the whole world, bar none. Bar none. When we started, they called us miscreants. Jobless. I like that word, miscreant, I like unorthodox. The whole world is listening to us. They call all of you miscreants. The day they referred to this great family as miscreants, I knew that was the end of the zoo. Who is our UT coordinator? He's a what? An orthopedic surgeon. Do you know of any Fulani orthopedic surgeon? I will ask again. Do you know of any Fulani orthopedic surgeon before? Alimajri is calling an orthopedic surgeon a miscreant. Then you judge for yourself who the miscreant is. Then you judge for yourself who the miscreant is. Did they conduct elections today in the zoo? Is that the elections? We determined that it should be that way. Listen very, very carefully to me. This great family called IPOB determined that the outcome of the zoo elections will be marred with violence and mayhem. Inconclusive, that's what they will say tomorrow. How did we make it possible? Because we knew from the beginning. When they heard about our boycott, OPC, the governing party, was very pleased. Open our door. I said in IPOB, "I always have three plans." Tom, you only know one. In this case, boycott. Ute mepho knows two. By virtue of the authority you gave me, I am the only person that knows all three. When the history of 2019 elections is written in the zoo, one name will be dominant, IPOB. We are seventy Fulani only, boycott. Very serious clap. They brought every Igbo elder, every Biafran elder that I respect to pressure me to call it off. And I said, "No, until you sign my documents for me." And that very document was duly signed and we have it. Once they signed the document, I lifted the boycott to achieve two things that some of you may not know. If we had gone ahead with the boycott, our land would have been divided. Do you know that? Because our people are Republicans by nature. What you'll be hearing is that none of the colonialism of Africa, none of the model. Understand me very well. The other thing that I did was to ensure that nobody will blame us for what is happening today in the zoo. Had we not lifted the boycott, every violent act, every mayhem, every bombing, every killing will be attributed to IPOB. Some people were complaining back home. As an enemy, man, I can lift the boycott. To the car, I get what PVC says, "That's where you got it wrong." You don't understand that when you're going to war, you have different approaches. It is not everybody today who is part of our security back home. Some people are in the media, as Carol said. Some people work for our women. Some of you are coordinators. Some of you are standing guard today, making sure that we are safe. Ega haba, bechekwechek. Let those that have the PVC go and represent your interest. You don't have to be there. Understand this logic very simply. If you have PVC or not, it doesn't matter. Those that have their PVCs have covered you. Are you aware of that? You that did not collect your PVC, you made it possible also for the agreement to be signed. Do you understand what I'm saying? Wanted to prove to them that without guns and bullets, we will collapse the zoo. If they had known that I would call off the boycott, the elections wouldn't have continued, they would have stopped. But I lifted the boycott when it was too late for them to do anything about it. The only alternative left for Jubril is to introduce mother, to introduce chaos, to introduce mayhem. And that's what they're doing today. But one fact is very clear. Those that doubted us before when we call Nigeria a zoo, would they doubt us anymore now? Would they doubt us anymore again? Have you seen how many people they've killed? Some of you are not on social media, go and have a look. When we tell them that the zoo cannot conduct elections, nobody wanted to believe us. But it's now very clear for the whole world to see that Nigeria is unworkable. Nigeria is unworkable. Anybody who believes in Nigeria with any sense of sincerity needs medical help. When I spoke about Jubril, I told the whole world about Jubril. In Israel, I had a meeting with very important people. When I go to such meetings, I don't go alone. I took other people with me. And I asked the lady, "Do you know who Buhari is?" She said to me, "But of course, he's dead." Who'd know he's dead? And I said to her that in the zoo, they don't believe that Buhari is dead. And she asked me, "Why are they finding it difficult to believe?" I said, "Because they know if they concede that Buhari is no more, the zoo will no longer exist." That means they're believing a lie. That means they brought in this man from Sudan to impersonate a whole president of the country. And who are those involved in the conspiracy? I will tell you. They are those Fulani cabal that governs your lives. Those that can appoint any security chief without anybody talking about it. There's nothing you can do about it. They can appoint whoever they like. Ainek is Fulani. Customs is Fulani. Police is Fulani. Immigration is Fulani. NMPC is Fulani. Navy, for everything, where there is no stream, under the stream in the desert, is a naval commander. Only in the zoo. They conspired with Yoruba media. Because an enemy of my enemy is mine. That was what they did. Yoruba media decided to run against the Jubril story, knowing fully well that any credible expose on Jubril will bring the zoo to an end. And they don't want the zoo to come to an end because they are benefiting from it. Um, that was why some of our brothers, those that collected amnesty money and sold themselves and not us. This is one thing they never understand. All the oil that fuels the economy of the zoo comes from our land, isn't it? Is it therefore appropriate that all the headquarters of the oil companies are located in Yoruba land? There is a man called Akinola Aguda. You may not know him. Do you know him? Do you know him? He was the Yoruba man that chaired the committee that saw the transfer of the capital of the zoo from Lagos to Abuja. And when they were doing it, Akinola Aguda extracted from Ibrahim Badamosu Buangida and the Fulani elite that every seaport in Biafra land will be closed. Only Lagos will be open if they want the capital to move to Abuja. And they agreed. They agreed. So you didn't know that before. Now you know. Akinola Aguda was the man responsible for making sure that Uguwaka seaport is not working. What if seaport is not working? Calabar is not working. And some of our people can still stand up and tell me that there is something dissent about One Nigeria. And not only that. After shutting down your seaports, you go to Lagos to clear your goods or your cars. And then they use the same Fulani custom men that you paid in the wolf, they line them on the road again, all the way to your village. Collecting money from us as we go past each and every checkpoint. When you complain, you go to the commissioner of police in your state or to the DPO, the same DPOs from Fulani in our own land. None of the people attempting to fault IPOB's strategy can tell us today what they have done for our people. As I said, when the terms and conditions that they signed up to are published, most of them will commit suicide, I assure you of that. I have been saying it and I'll keep saying it. I have met many people who have discussed Biafra. They have asked me, "What will it take?" And I challenge anybody to go and ask any of them. What my response has always been. This thing that my people want must be done. Nobody can ever tell you that Nnamdi cannot ask for this or for that. When Odus Okalo came to prison to see me, I would, have I told you before what we discussed? I would tell IPOB UK today. Odus Okalo asked me to abandon Biafrageitation. But anything I want can be given to me. I have witnesses. I have witnesses. And I asked him, "How do you intend to emancipate our people?" And he suggested full participation in the politics of the zoo. And I said to him, "Let us assume that I agree with you. What do you think is the pressing need now for a Biafran in the zoo?" Or for an Igbo man, very particular. He said, "We need presidency." Listen very carefully. And I said to him, "Since you have honored me by coming here to see me and by recommending we join zoo politics, please go amongst all of you, the errant boys that call themselves elite. Go and bring out one person amongst all of you. Say, 'This is our presidential candidate.' If you do it, I will support you and that very person." Do you know what it told me? That it is not possible. Go and ask. I said, "Go and produce somebody." And I said to him, "Have you seen how you have sold yourself so cheaply?" When I was arrested on the 14th, it was October, wasn't it? 2015. IPOB all over the world rose. We blocked the bridge on it for four days, no traffic. I never paid anybody to do that. IPOB recognized what I represented. I knew that if they don't do anything, the zoo will insult me. IPOB blocked the bridge on it. Our person just said, "Give them presidency." But Buangida said, "Give them presidency." All it would have taken was for Hanessa to rise up and to say that what IPOB is saying is correct. That's all it would have taken. And the zoo will be gone for good. When that time came, then I, if I was a boy, as they normally do, how can people be there? And, um, and this small boy is telling you people what to do. Instead of fighting the zoo that is killing us, they left the zoo, they said to attack Nnamdi Kan and IPOB. You know what they did very cleverly? That offer of presidency, they would do it and put it in their pockets and say, "We now have them where we want them." They don't go and be fighting amongst themselves. Now they abandoned what they were supposed to be doing and started fighting me and IPOB. That was how your presidency went through the window. I went to see Niawo. I can't move on Niawo, but I'm bored. I went in Niawo's house two times. The first time was in the USA. Second time, we met him. And say, "Nnam, I've come to greet you." He asked me, "How are we going to do this thing?" And I said to him, "Go to Abuja and get them to sign my document." I never change, I don't change. Very, very consistent. He said, "I should call off election boycott in Annambra." And I said to him, "Use it as a leverage. Go to Uguwasa and tell them that these people are saying, 'No, give me something to take back to them.'" Understand the language. Give me something. And they asked me, "What is that something?" And I gave them, this list was formed in 2015. It doesn't, it's never changed. I gave him the same list, said, "Take it to them." They must give us something now before we lift any boycott, isn't it? They refused Annambra elections. This thing we are doing now, we've done it before, in case you don't know. Let me remind you. November of 2017, we did exactly the same thing. Right and coming to sign the agreement, they brought army to come and kill me and to kill IPOB. These are Igbo men. I asked them, "What did I do to you?" They said he doesn't listen to elders. I said, "But me too, I'm an elder." I said to Niawo and the governors of the southeast, "Go to Abuja, tell them IPOB said no until they concede our demands." Why should an international flight take off from Kebi? A place that nobody even remembers. Betna Kallaba Margaret Able International Airport. When you board Ethiopia Airlines sometimes from Enugu, you stop in Kanu, stop over before you continue your journey. Betna international flights can fly into ZTJBA, they call it or whatever, Ntis is called, in the north. Do you know how many international airports they have in the north? You don't know. It's over 10. Over 10. I asked them to upgrade the Enugu airport to the same standard as Lagos. I asked them to open the Uguwaka seaport. I asked them to build our roads. Uguwaka Enugu, Enugu Anisha. Oh, my, I'm aware of it. Is that a bad thing? Ugocha, Enugu, Enugu and Nisha. Oh my, I aware. Is that a bad thing? These are simple things that can be done. And I said to Niawo, if you cannot take this simple demand to Abba, I don't know what you're doing here. I can't understand it. Is it difficult that you want a road built? You want to airports opened? You want to seaports opened? Is that too big a thing to ask for? The alternative was to come and kill me. They came. And as they said, the rest is history. They came to my house to me. They didn't succeed. The next place they saw me in was in Israel, in Jerusalem, when I was praying. Oh, and then I told you, I told you, online. And I said to them, if you manage to cross Badagri without passport and survive it, then you'll know what it means to travel to Israel without a passport. And I told them that I will come back to England from where we started this very journey. To address the people that made it possible for this journey to start from here. And as I told you, in twenty fifteen, I will go back to the zoo. No, we need the Nampimpa people. I will return to the zoo. And when I do so, the world will hear about it. Yeah, hundred Flanetja Okomena twenty twenty-two will happen that same day. I said this last night and I'll repeat this very adage. In the sense that our people remember this all the time, why we do things the way we do it. Biafrans are Republicans. When you're leading them, as you're running ahead. You, you know how we are? There's a way you'd be running at the front. I lifted the boycott because I wanted Biafra to be one marching forward, always. We can't afford any division in the house. We cannot afford any ideological conflict within this very house. But above all, above all, we have what we have been looking for for a very long time. And by lifting this very boycott, the zoo is boiling today because of it. And from it, the zoo will never ever recover. You see today's date. Today is the twenty-third, isn't it? The zoo can never recover from this. That is why you must all remain very strong and resolute. Determined and focused. It is only now that I'm beginning to appreciate what our leader went through. To serve our people is one of the most difficult assignments in the whole world. They said Moses suffered. I said Moses detected Biafran people. Because had Moses led our people, you know that one that let's say opened, as I worked it, Moses would close it. Our people are very, very difficult, but at the same time, at the same time. One hour thirty-nine zero. Open this again for me, please. I said today's, day, day, yeah, then I could watch the third, February. We are intelligent people. There is a very big difference between being intelligent and being clever. It's not the same thing. Call for boycott. Oh, what did you call for boycott? Okay, we've lifted it. Oh, what did you lift it? I don't understand. I don't understand that. These niggas are wearing a dark suit. They will say, why didn't you wear a white one or gray? INEC postpones elections in Lagos, in Rivers, in Anambra, and others. You hear what I told IPAB? This is happening because we lifted the boycott, that's all. And there's no date when they'll do it again. Oh, we're gonna. It's finished for the zoo. Do you see how IPAB fight? Do you see how we reason? It is not due to our strength, our might, our intellect, our understanding, our superior reasoning. It is by the grace of Chukosikadama. There was an old mother today back home. I don't know if anyone has seen the video. She was saying, I would have told me in the IPAB in the pool. Judges and gas. Today. Now, when we tell them that the, that Nigeria is a zoo, will anybody doubt us anymore? If we tell them that the zoo is unworkable, will they doubt us anymore? Anything we cost, remain cost. I was, I was in the prison and I caused the zoo. I was here. But I said to Britain, if you don't reverse your policies on Biafra, Elohim will deal with you. Did you hear me when I said that before? Britain must repent and support Biafra. If, listen carefully to me. If Britain doesn't turn around to support Biafra, this country will be decimated that the Queen will only have England, even East Anglia, to call a kingdom. I, 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 what I'm telling you is fact. Simple fact. Because I, one of my British friends, I spoke to her. And I said to her, do you know why God will punish Britain? And she said, no. I said, because we are the only people that have something in common with Britain more than any other race in Africa. And he, he, she said, but how, how, how is that possible? I said, let's start from our names that we even answer. Do we answer Wokocha? Where we come from? Wokocha? Wokoji? Do they have Mr. White and Mr. Black here? There is Mr. White and Mr. Black in England. The same way we have Wokocha and Wokoji. And I said to them, it is only in Biafra land as well as in England, because don't take anything away from them. England remains the most civilized country in the whole world. By none, I'm being honest with you. By none. This is the most civilized place on the face of this very earth, England is. And I was saying to her that the same thing is applicable to Biafra. And she said, why? I said, in my compound now, if I go outside and I see a visitor and I start to molest or to beat up that very visitor, somebody will come and ask me, what did that person do to you? Only Biafrans can do that. And that is why our life is incompatible with that of our WhatsApp and forever and ever. We are not the same people. We can never be the same people. Not today, not tomorrow, not ever. That is why we agitate and that is why we keep agitating until Biafra is restored. You know, sometimes in this movement, we can be moving forward. We see an obstacle which we cannot explain to you. Rather than smash through the obstacle, we simply bypass it and we continue. Do you understand? How many of you knows that Python Dance was conceived to provoke IPAB to see how many weapons we have? Do you know that is why they did it? They came to test us to see if we can retaliate. Once I give the order for retaliation, you know what they will do? They'll go to Sabong Gali, in Kanu, they'll kill Igbo people. And then, then Niawo and the mahi will say, oh, did we tell you he came to cause war? But I'm smarter than them. I asked the men not to retaliate. That Chukosikadama will fight for us. And today, Chukosikadama is fighting for us. Because the zoo is collapsing. The zoo is collapsing. I ask you for one thing. I know, you know, some of us who don't read very lengthy articles online. Wants to look at the headline or the first or two paragraphs. I will ask each and every one of us here, please. If you're lettered enough to try and be online to help Carol and the team in the great work that they're doing, very, very important. We have fought and defeated many enemies along the way. Very many enemies. And there are greater ones to come as well. And I'm asking you that the only way we can get to our promised land, which is Biafra, not just by mouthing unity and the sense of purpose, you have to demonstrate it individually and collectively. That takes me to the hierarchy of IPAB and how we function. I'll use UK as an example. Every coordinator in the UK is loyal to our national coordinator. Listen. There were those I chased away from IPAB because they were rude and insolent to my deputy. I take loyalty very, very seriously. The same way I'm loyal to you. I will never let you down. Not, it can never ever happen. The rest assured. Having said that, our national leader in the UK, Dr. Justice Okachi, has an executive that will guide him in what he's doing. And who are those executives, if you may ask me? Our coordinator in Birmingham, the one in Manchester, the one in London, the one in Cornwall, in all these great cities you have scattered all over UK, they make up his cabinet. Are you following me? That I'm telling you how IPAB functions. Every coordinator in every, I said every coordinator, be it in, in Nunez Head, uh, be it in, um, anywhere that is Greater London, reports to the London coordinator. Do you follow me? I didn't ask you to report to the national coordinator. You report to your local coordinator. The London coordinator, who now takes your concerns to the national coordinator. Before you get a national coordinator, you go through the local coordinator you have, be it London, be it Manchester, be it Scotland, be it Wales. It is. It's very, very important to understand this. I want when our national coordinator in the UK is coming out, there'll be respect and recognition of his office. If anybody disrespects our national coordinator, they will no longer be part of this very family. Very important. In the same vein, any coordinator in London who disrespects the London coordinator is in very serious trouble. The same thing happens in Manchester, in Birmingham, and in all the very big cities. That is the essence of command and control. We respect who is at the head. We tell you the truth. IPAB, they tell me the truth all the time. It doesn't mean that they hate you. It means that they want you to be better, to improve. Because people go to places and they talk about us. They wouldn't want you to do anything that will bring shame to them. Why they advise, they keep telling, they keep writing all the time. I want this family to be one. Because we have nothing. We have no knives, we have no guns, we have no bombs. The only thing that we have that our enemies are still struggling to find out how we make that possible is our unity and sense of purpose. That is what defines IPAB. When I was in prison, some people wanted me to die in prison. I did not die inside prison. No, they became so sad and unhappy. I came out. They said, he has sold the struggle. I said, sell the struggle to who? To your papa or to your mother? Who did you sell it to? They couldn't answer me. They said he will no longer move about because I understand Fulani more than understand themselves. They wanted to do to me what they do was Rika. You don't know that? Go and look at Wasrika's bed condition, the same thing as mine. Don't move about. Don't talk. Don't eat before seven o'clock in the morning. Make sure you're in bed by nine o'clock in the evening. When I came out of prison, I said to the world that I must preach this very gospel. They said that you shouldn't go to places. If you come here, we will shoot you. If you come here, you will die. I reminded them of what I did in two thousand and fifteen. I don't know how many of you were with us then. In twenty fifteen, I traveled to Biafra land to go and do our remembrance, our hero's memorial, thirty eighth of May. I was in Abba. And there were threats all over the place that they will kill me when I come to Abba. I said, okay, I want to die in Abba. Because of that, I will come with my mother. So that when I die, somebody will take me back to where I come from. My mother came and sat beside my podium. And I said to her, if they shoot me and I die here today, you only have one assignment. You take me back to Samaforiko and bury me there. That today I will preach this very gospel. And we did. And nothing happened. They said I shouldn't move about. I shouldn't talk. I shouldn't speak. And I said, you are lying. The first man to call for my arrest because I was holding rallies, he's now dead. Well, he's a senator. He died four weeks ago. I held rallies, unannounced rallies. I don't announce my appearance until four hours. Because if I give them four days' notice, there'll be, there'll be no movement. Anywhere I go to, the place is shut down without any announcement. Without paying people to identify with IPAB. That is one thing about our people that I love very much. And I said to them, it is easier to get our people. Very, very easy to get them. And they asked me what, I said the truth is, you're Gucci neck. Once they know your dignity, they follow you. The day that my house was attacked, I was on my way to Ogoni land. Some of you don't know this before, Ogoni elders invited me to my address there. They got wind of it and they said, if we allow him to do in Ogoni what happened, I told people, when we, when he went there, we will lose all of that area to Biafra. They attacked me at Tobacala. They were firing live ammunition at us, anybody who was there. And maybe I think his hometown must have recorded it. Not in my house, at Tobacala, before they came to my house. We survived it. And then they felt that the best thing for them to do was to come and kill me. So when I see people writing or saying what they don't know about IPAB and myself and this great movement, I feel sorry for them. But I have only one comfort consoling me. Comfort, I want one, because I'm not one. I'll have to rephrase that. Uh, eh, are you sure? I said I have one comfort, comfort, I want one, they're, they're, oh, they're taking, I see. The only consolation that I have is when I look back, I see IPAB behind me. When I go through on the chain market, it's shut down, drive-through only. Driving through only. Not on a visit, just a drive-through. As I'm Isn't it very funny that since I came back to the UK, I keep seeing Yoruba people everywhere? And they keep wanting to take pictures with me? Without you, I am nothing, do you know that? Do you know that? I am who I am because of you, because of IPAB. Here in the UK, I am renewing the same bond that I have with IPAB seven years ago. But I will never, ever let you down. Any day I wake up in the morning and not pray for you and not think about IPAB and how to restore Biafra, Chukokikadama, if you don't take my life, I know you're not God. Because of you, I do what I do. Knowing fully well that victory is round the corner. And I ask all of you here present, please, understand what I said tonight. Understand how IPAB's structure functions. Our national coordinator cannot hold a national executive meeting without all his coordinators around the country in attendance. Understand this very well. And who are those people? I have mentioned. Of course, he has his deputy. And, um, how many, Kebbe, who, who, Dr. Kachino said? How many people do you have in your executive, how many people do you have you directly appointed running IPAB right now in the UK? Yes, 25 at the moment, that is executive. Those 25 coordinators, that is executive. But they are the very big ones, those that control the very big cities. You must understand this. On our national place, nobody from Birmingham or Manchester should come to you without first going through their coordinator. The same thing applies in London. Nobody. When they come to you, ask them to go and see their coordinator. And let's have a complaint. That was the reason why I removed everybody challenging Uchamefo. If you challenge him, I will remove you. I never promoted Carol Monday. But she was there at from the beginning. I said this in London meeting and allow me to repeat because the world is listening. There are people that contributed so much to this very movement. Even those I have not seen or met before. I acknowledge and recognize all your hard work and your effort towards this very movement. We are not doing it for a reward. Can't go here in London or zone. And I am a bad, I'm a marian. I am not doing Biafra, I want to be head of state because I will not be. And it will be a whole, ha! Oh, you personally, go and make sure that Biafra is restored and your work is done and you're out of the way. Those that will own Biafra, I will send them. I am not doing what I'm doing to command or to rule over anybody. Understand this, please. But I'm very glad today, having seen what I have seen previously at the London hardcore meeting, we called it. And this general house today, the home of the UK, I can confidently say that the IPAB family in the UK are in very safe hands. The only good thing you will do for me is that you will give our national coordinator your fullest cooperation imaginable. I am a human being, so also is my deputy, the national, the London coordinator. Sometimes I may get it wrong because I'm human. And when you want to correct me, you correct me with a lot of affection. Correct me with love if possible. You can admonish me, but admonish me with concern for the integrity of this very movement. Not out of spite, jealousy, envy or greed. In our WhatsApp land, in Kanu, none of your relatives in Kanu voted today, they said no. Do you know that? Our people in Kanu, we are not allowed to vote today. Those in, those in Igbo-dominated areas in Lagos, we are not allowed to vote today. Oh, man, IPAB, I, I am a man who don't win. Do I need to go and evangelize anymore that Nigeria don't want us? You see this IPAB, every time we call ourselves Sumuchineke, we don't even know the meaning of it. I want to let you know that IPAB was ordained by God himself. And that is why that is why this movement can never be broken by anybody. It called, you didn't have Facebook for only three or four days, you just got there somewhere. You can't do anything to IPAB, I'm telling you. They kill us, we come out to march the next day, they kill, we come out to march the very next day. Because we are determined. Because we are resolute. Because we don't retreat nor surrender. Somebody told Fulani people under Haneze, OK, Zee, Baso and Dave Rumahi. If you want to destroy IPAB, go and kill Nnamdekanu, once you kill him, IPAB will collapse. I was in DSS custody, they couldn't kill me. I went to Pujé, they couldn't kill me. They came to my house, they could not kill me. Just so, so long as it's alive, look at that boom. But one thing they have done for us is this. Any day we pick up arms to fight the zoo, do you think anybody will blame us? That's what I said. And from today, you will remember that this day that I'm addressing this family in the UK, that the zoo have started to collapse. And there is nothing anybody can do to fix or to repair it anymore. I expect this family of IPAB to grow more than it was ever before. If you're in this very hall tonight, you're very lucky. Very, very lucky. Because you are about to witness what has never happened before. The emergence of a truly independent and a free nation in Africa. But above all, some of you have potentials. Your reward will come when Biafra is restored. Not now. So work very hard for it. And by the grace of Chukokikadama, who shall be so fulfilling in the end, thank you very much.
Holy, 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 Nandekano is another savior. Holy, 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 Nandekano is another savior. Holy, 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 Nandekano is another savior.
Because, I, I really go see the woman, I, 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 the woman I get here like that. And I get here like that, the woman that will sleep in the house. Say that, the woman I get here now, there, the girl she might not know, so that I know about.
Holy, holy, Nandekano is another savior. Holy, 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 Nandekano is another savior. Holy, 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 Nandekano is another savior. Holy, holy, holy. Coordinators, please. All the UK coordinators on the stage, please.
A lot of them are having to brush their hair.
I know. Every UK coordinator who's available now, please quickly. A picture with her, you see? Every coordinator, quickly, quickly. I know you come from far, all the coordinators, please, now. Particularly those who have traveled from a distance, all UK coordinators on the stage now, please, quickly. I know you come from far. We are privileged to have you here. And I know you didn't bring your cameras in. So can we take a picture of you and him, please? Can, come on, come on the stage here. Okay, no, stay there, stay there. Stay there. Okay, all the coordinators. All the coordinators, those who are left. Okay. Who's the cameraman? We're about to go after this. Who's got the camera? To get a picture. The camera. Final, final call for all UK coordinators. Final call for all UK coordinators. CJ, picture, please. Yes, there. He will stand here. Please stand there, sir. Zoka, join in. Only, only see, only see, please stand on the stage. On the stage, it's easier, so then everybody's now it's good to stay in there. Okay. Come here, stand there. Stand there. Only coordinators, thank you. Only coordinators. Thank you. That's fine. Thank you very much. Okay, now. Yes. Okay. Those who are about to go, those who are about to go, want to say quick goodbye to us. Quickly. Yes. Good to go, making a path. Yes. Yes. Yeah. IPAB! IPAB! One family! Please, can you sit down if you want to take picture with our director? Sit down now, please. IPAB! Anybody that wants to appear to the, at the picture, please come to the center, have your seat, please. This will only last for three minutes or two minutes, please, have your seats. IPAB! One family! Durayinaga, Nandi Durayinaga. Have your seat, please, IPAB! Please, please. Do what we want to do it, our leader will rotate round, center and the back. People will do the capture, you will see it on the WhatsApp groups, please. Do not get up, please. Don't start, don't start. Don't start. Go back, go back, go back. Snap it, go back. Go back. Who is taking the picture, cameraman, let's go. Who is taking the picture? Cameraman, let's go. Stay where you are, IPOB! Stay where you are! Can you get up there? Cameraman, let's go! Come up. Deputies who want to stay there, go back. Deputy will stay there. IPOB, can you come up? Only you see. Only one side of the man, I don't go. Where are you from? Tell me. Zoka. Please, can we speak, Zoka? Please, let's go, let's go. Are you next place, that's where they can stand, next place. Next place, please. You sit down, please. What's the matter? No, 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 you stand up. Stand up, man! Go! IPOB! Our leader needs to go, please. No, can you... Can you stop laughing, please? Can you stop laughing, please? Stop, stop, please!
Oh, hey, Biafra! Oh, hey, Biafra, I don't know whether this line is going or not. Can I have microphone, please? That microphone. Oh, hey, Biafra! Oh, hey, Biafra! Oh, hey, Biafra! Oh, hell, Biafra, oh, hey, Biafra! Can we sit down for a minute, please? Very important. Our leader, Mazinam Kano, has just left the venue. And it is very important that we have some semblance of serenity and quietness. Can everybody sit down, please? Can everybody sit down, please? They are not listening. Yeah, let everybody sit down. IPOB! Please, sit down. Did the deputy want to address us? IPOB! Can everyone sit down? Still no, don't know why. Sit down, please. George, important announcement here, please. Speak announcement, Biafra, can we sit down? Mommy, 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 we want everyone to sit down, please. Very important. Sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down. Please, sit down. Very important message, can we sit down, yes? Sit down, please, we are Biafra. Can't we sit down, even if we are five people here, we were asked to sit down, we sit down. Sit down, very important announcement, please. Sit down, sit down. Yes, yeah, sit down. Yes, sit down, sit down, please. Right, Mazukach. Yes, thank you very much, everyone, thank you very much, thank you very much. I want to appreciate it, everyone of us here who have come around to, of course, welcome our leader back to the UK. It is a unique privilege that is not very common. I don't understand why even our security men are talking here, I don't understand that. I want to proceed, I made this announcement, very important, the whole world is, of course, listening. On behalf of our leader, Mazinam Kano, and specifically following the mandate given to me as his deputy, I am hereby announcing that Mazi Ken Abubah, Mazi Ken Abubah is back to the family of IPOB. Mazi Ken Abubah, who was removed for one reason or the other, is back to the IPOB family, that issue has been resolved. And we want to use opportunity to extend a very warm hand of fellowship to him and to as the entire IPOB family in the kingdom, in fact, all over the world, to recognize and appreciate that Mazi Ken Abubah is part of this family. And this has been a very direct announcement and instruction from our leader Mazinam Kano, as I'm heavily representing him here. Thank you very much and God bless you, thank you. I will hand over this microphone once again to the UK national and with a very specific purpose of him making further announcements. And after that, we will proceed to either end this program or postpone it.
Thank you, Deputy Leader. Biafra! Biafra! Freedom! Nalu, nalu nee!
Yeah, IPOB! IPOB! I apologize for my voice. I've worked all week to make today is... IPOB!
One family!
Please pardon my voice. I've worked all week and I've been screaming and making sure everything works today.
One house!
Please, I can't shout. Can you give me your audience, please? Can you hear, is it better? Okay. I'm so sorry. My voice has traveled. Anyway, I'm here to talk about BEAT. Anybody knows what BEAT is? What? Great, let's laugh for ourselves. Excellent. And thank you for the opportunity. Thank you our Deputy Leader for listening to me. Thank you for the opportunity, thank you our national. Thank you everybody, all coordinators, all protocol observed. I'm here to talk to you about BEAT. BEAT, as we have all said, is Biafra Educational Awareness Day. What Biafra Educational Awareness? We need to enlighten ourselves, to know about ourselves. Nobody can tell anybody's story apart from the person that has the story. You agree with me that we tell our story better because it is our story. And how do we tell our story? By being on top of it, by knowing the story itself. That's why education is very vital. It was Nelson Mandela that said, "Education is the most powerful weapon which we can use to train the world", and which is true. But as you educate yourself, as you get to know, you get to empower yourself and you get to move yourself to a higher level. That's why we do this at Biafra Educational Awareness Day. It's a long story to talk about how it all started. But it's important that every, every zone, every meeting, every family meeting, during your meeting, you have a period to educate yourselves. Choose a topic, choose a topic and use that topic to educate yourself for the day. I know we are tired, we've listened so much, but let me just run ahead to talk about the genocide exhibition coming up this year in August. We need to tell the world our story. We need to show pictures of what happened to us. We need to let the world know that it's happened to us, it's not just stories, but this is real. That's why we're having the genocide exhibition in August. And it's a very, very important exhibition. And it's an exhibition that is also coming up with the training. It's a two-day program exhibition and the next day training. And which is the big factor of it. We need to be there, we need to all get involved. Every family, every group, as far as you are in the UK. It doesn't matter what part of UK. You all need to get on top of it, get involved with the genocide exhibition. And also there are some topics to cover during the genocide exhibition. We've been sending it out on the WhatsApp group. I have it here, but I don't have the, I don't have the slides for it. But there are topics and we all, we send it out on forums every time. This topic needs to read, needs to be educated, needs to get our people to know and read about their research. We just have to know where we go off evangelism. BEAT is what we use to evangelize because we got to tell our people what we know about ourselves and tell them why it is important for them to be with us. My voice is trained so much, so let me stop here. But if there's something else to talk about, you will see it on the forums. Thank you so much for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is that all the best you can do? Can we give a clap, please, around? Whilst you're waiting for right now, for a more exciting turn?
Oh hell Biafra! Oh hell Biafra! IPOB! IPOB! One family! My names are Okichuku Stevena Kamewe. A member of indigenous people of Biafra Kent family. Are we listening to me? Should I continue? Hello? Hello? Oh hell Biafra! I want to continue from where my sister stopped. Based on Biafra Educational Awareness Day, because of her voice, she couldn't further the teaching. We are prepared for the occasion and we want to ask you to prepare yourself for the occasion. We are prepared to educate ourselves about our history and our story one day in a year. The preparation will start before the date. That is what she meant, that all the contents of the program will be published on the forums. IPOB! I am talking about Biafra Educational Awareness Day coming up soon this year. Secondly, secondly, I want to talk about our new project. We have a very, very good and wonderful project that requires your support. We want to start taking evangelism naturally from one postcode to the other. We want to go to the kind of awareness program with our project. While the women are progressing in the women's program, the educational program is growing. We want to get involved in sports, activity. We want to get involved in food activities. We will start with football first. We have the crowd. We have the power. We have the money to organize it. Attending meetings to meetings and rally to rally have to be upgraded in this 2019. When we say we want Biafra women business, we meant to spend time on the activities that will bring Biafra. We need to go for Biafra. And we are not ready to go for Biafra with guns and bombs. We have to design programs that will get people involved into what we are doing without knocking on their door. IPOB Kent branch on this very day, we are supposed to present a full football team. A complete football team with complete jersey and football to play. But because of one thing or the other, we decided to keep it for another day. We have organized a complete football team that can help our brothers and sisters who came here to play football that are now ending their career as laborers instead of footballers. We want to create a room that can employ our brothers who came to UK with the hope of making money like others who are from other countries through football and ended up as laborers. We want to welcome them and at the same time, give them a starting point by creating a football team. I want to suggest that we create a football team based on the way national will approve it. Kent, we are ready to host our team. Amaleh is a project we created and we expect every family to start talking about it and start planning towards challenging Kent. IPOB! IPOB! Want to repeat what I said before. I said, every family need to start thinking towards establishing a football team that will take the message of our freedom program and that will even help us in evangelism. We want to go by sports, we want to go through visual. We have the TV station that will go live on our football matches. We will get the sponsors and we will continue from there. IPOB! Sorry. I, am I talking to myself? I said, every family should get ready to have a football team that will be ready to challenge Kent as from next two weeks. Yes, by, by next week, Kent family, Kent football team will start training. And when we start training, we need teams within IPOB family to challenge. And we, 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 we went to promise you, we will impress you with it, you will be happy. So many families have started it outside UK and we did not start on time. I have, I have seen IPOB family playing nations. We can do it. Thank you. Oh hell Biafra! We are talking about how to make our struggle into a lifestyle. Make into, into our attitude, into what we are doing. We have to bring this struggle naturally. We have to get it from, from the field to education, to challenge, to registering it as one of the, one of the competitions in United Kingdom. I know we can do it. I know we can do it. Thank you.
Well done, everybody, we are rounding up now. There are so many things we could have discussed today, but it was such a unique occasion, a unique opportunity. We are truly privileged to have had our Supreme Leader here with us. But I just want to say very thanks to every single person who have made today a wonderful day. Our deputy have stayed right at the end and we're about to shut down the radio now. Listen, everybody, please put hand, let's clear this place. Let's help tidy up and then let us get back safely in time for next meeting. We're gonna do it in prayer. And I think Ma, Ma is busy eating, so we need to do a closing prayer. Because the blokes opened it, we need to do a closing prayer. So give it to Ma, come and say closing prayer for us, please. And then we'll round up. Yeah? Closing prayer. Yeah. Closing prayer. Okay, let's all stand, please, for a closing prayer. Don't forget, we're gonna, gonna clear up here quickly. Our system is busy enjoying the pepper soup. Biafra! Biafra! Freedom! Okay, let's, let's all rise for a closing prayer.
Chukokika es de debube. God of Israel. Chukokika Biamaw Biafra. Oye de saw. Oye anebul ya hielu. Oye de debube. Ain'a jagem machineke. Ain'a jagem maburibu. We thank you, oh Lord, for the gathering we have had today, Father, we thank you. We bless you, oh God, for helping us throughout the time, Lord. For bringing in our director here who spoke to us. You indeed, Lord, spoke to us through him. We thank you, oh God, for what we had. We thank you, oh God, for the updates. We thank you, oh God, even for what is happening in our land. Father, we thank you because you said in all things, we should give you thanks. Because we understand in part and we do in part. But you know all things, Lord. There is nothing hidden before you, great God. We know that you have promised to give us Biafra. But Lord, you have a program. You said to the Israelite, you are driving the animals little by little so that they will not overwhelm them. Many of us do not understand how you work, Lord. That is why we are full of questions. But Lord, because you love us so much that you have sent Mazinam Dekanun to come and relieve us from the slavery we have been into. Father, we thank you because the time is fast approaching and we shall glorify you when we receive Biafra. Father, we thank you for our come. We are to give them your grace because of said, Lord. We ask you to console them. We ask you, oh God, to help them understand that your love will never go away from them. You love them, that is why you are working hard to bring us to the end. My Father, we thank you that this meeting went on very well. And all that we heard from Mazinam Dekanun, our hearts are glad, Lord. And we continue to pray for him, Lord. I know that you are with him always and with his family and with every member of IPOB, all the leadership of IPOB, all the directors of state, every little person of IPOB. Whatever little work we do to keep this struggle going forward, Father, it is only by your power, it is only by your grace, Father. And we are waiting for the time we shall collect together and give you glory. As we are going away now, gracious Lord, lead us home safely. Go with us in a different direction and help us to stay in your presence, Lord. Knowing that, Lord, you see everything we do, for there is nothing hidden in your sight. Father, may your grace, may your favor, may your goodness rest upon us and our families. Father, this time, I thank you, Lord. I thank you for our deputy here, Mazuchemoefo, for his strength and his tenacity. Father, I pray that you continue to guide him and guide his family and all our families, Lord. We belong to you, Lord, and we have the time to glorify you. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Lord, God of heaven. Our Savior Christ the Lord. We cannot go to God without you. We give you glory. Yeshua and Mashua. Yeshua and him. Take the honor, Lord. Take the glory, Lord, and let the blessing be upon us. In, in Chukokika Biamas, I pray.
Biafra! Biafra! Freedom! Deputy Leader, we thank you for coming today.
Thank you very much.
For your efforts. God bless you, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, from our indefatigable, unstoppable national coordinator in the Kingdom, Dr. Okachi Lloyds, we will conclusively at this particular point in time, bring this program to a line. May the most high God continue to protect, continue to lead us, continue to give us every enablement that we shall, without any prevarication, without any evocation, continue to move forward until Biafra is restored. From us from here at this particular venue where we have conversed, where we have deliberated, where we have indeed consummated everything that we have been doing, where we have met with our leader Mazinam Dekanun, it is good night and God bless.